Alrighty, we are going to now move on to item D1. In order to comply with the Fair Maps Act, we need to start the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing and I'm going to have our former county administrator, who is now helping us with our redistricting, do a presentation. This is a hearing on the 2021 redistricting process. We're going to provide an overview of the redistricting process, review the new redistricting dedicated website, provide information about communities of interest, explain how to submit draft maps once the census data is available, describe planned public outreach and availability of mapping software training, and receive input from the public, and then receive direction from the Board of Supervisors. So, welcome back, Mr. Taw.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Supervisors. It's glad to be back and see all of you. Today, we start the official process for the redistricting, but as you are well aware, this has been a process that we've been working on for several months, starting back in February when the Board approved our work plan. None of this could be accomplished without the work of a tremendous number of people, staff included, in terms of representatives from the Department of Conservation and Development, the Department of IT, the County Administrator's Office, the Clerk Recorder's Office, and people working out of the CCTV office. I specifically want to thank John Kofcek from the Department of Conservation and Development, who has made his staff available, and Christine Song-Sang, as well as Chris Howard, who have been most helpful and have been really doing the bulk of the work as it relates to the development of the dedicated redistricting website, which is up and running and will be in place as required by law for the next 10 years, so that there is a very specific process by which that we have to go through. So, as I said, today, we actually start the official process. This is our first of a number of public hearings that we will hold. The good news is that originally, you remember, the census data was supposed to be released on April 1st of this year. That did not happen for a number of reasons, and we had projected, based upon the information they provided to us, that we would not see the official census data until the end of September. Now, it actually will be released in terms of legacy form on this coming Thursday, August 12th. When we say legacy form, it essentially, it is the census data in a summary format that requires either a third party or a data expert to download and analyze the data sets. So, the legacy data may provide an approximate breakdown of population changes for the county and specifically for our supervisory districts. However, it is the California State Adjusted Redistricting Data, which will not be released until a later date, that is what is required for us to specifically do the redistricting for the county. Right now, our anticipation is that data will be released sometime in September. It could be early to mid to late September, we just don't know it. One of the things that happens with the California State Adjusted Redistricting Data is they have to take into consideration the incarcerated population across the state and then allocate those individuals back to individual jurisdictions. We don't expect that the number of incarcerated individuals in the state system is going to have a significant impact on our redistricting, but nevertheless, we have to wait until that data is actually released. The other thing to keep in mind is, once that data is released, people can certainly start submitting maps as far as their proposals for what they believe the supervisory district should look like. But by state law, we have to wait 21 days after the release of the California State data before we can submit maps. So, that'll have an impact on how we do our public hearing process going forward, and I'll talk more about that a little later. So, at this point, I'll start the PowerPoint. Looks like we're starting at the end. Great, thank you. So, as I indicated, this is, of course, the first of the public hearings. I gotta figure out how to make this thing work. So, as you know, essentially, this is the process that we have to use for redistricting. We have to comply with a number of statutes, including, of course, the 14th Amendment, the equal protection clause of Board. As I indicated, where's the County Board is responsible for the official drawing of the maps. And again, we won't have the anticipated official data until September of this year. So, the purpose of redistricting, of course, is to determine which neighborhoods and communities are grouped together for the purpose of electing a Board member. Interested parties are going to be encouraged to submit maps and the comments on how they think the boundary should be drawn, and we'll talk more about that process in a little bit. The last time we did this was back in 2011, and that resulted in the districts as shown on this particular map. In 2011, the census data showed that the county had grown by about 100,000 population. In 2020, our estimate is that the county has grown by an additional 100,000 people. In theory, if we were to allocate that across the districts proportionately, each district would have to add about 20,000 population to their numbers. We know that redistricting doesn't occur essentially across an even line, so we know that in some areas of the county, there'll be more population growth than there would have been in other portions. So, we have to take a number of things into consideration. The couple of federal laws that are critical, one, of course, is the equal protection clause, and the other one is the Voting Rights Act of 1965, which essentially set up a number of protections for certain classes in terms of voting rights. But we also have to deal with the California election codes and California statutes that have been passed over the last few years. There's mandatory requirements under the California process. It's strict time limits, and we'll talk more about that in a little bit, but we have to be done by December 15th of 2021. Now, normally, if the census data had been released back in April, as originally planned, that would be no problem. But the net results of it now is that since we won't have the data until September, we're going to be in a short timeline. Nevertheless, we're planning on a very robust public process for this. The mandatory requirements under California is that we have to have at least four public hearings, and one of those before the maps are drawn, and of course, today starts that process, and there has to be one specifically either on a Saturday, Sunday, or after 6:00 PM. We're planning to have the October 19th of public hearing at 6:15 in the evening to beat that requirement. The other thing is, the public hearings have to be at a specific fixed time. The other guideline that's important besides the population equality, and note that when we talk about population equality, the law understands that it's not going to be at 100% equal. So, the law allows a deviation from the mean of not more than plus or minus 5%. So, for example, in 2011, when we did the redistricting, we had one district that was about 3% lower than the mean, and we had one district that was 4.5% above the mean. So, we had a total deviation back in 2011 of about 7.5%. We have to comply, obviously, with the federal laws that I already mentioned, but one of the things to keep in mind is that the state law, AB 1276, which is known as the Fair Maps Act, has a ranked priorities. It basically sets out the process by which we have to do the redistricting and how it's ranked. So, the first one, as you can see, of course, is that, as to the extent practicable, the supervisor districts have to be geographically... Whoops, I should go back on this page.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Oh, on this slide?
Yes.
The population equality, going back, I'm sorry, the next slide?
Okay.
Yeah, the plus or minus 5%. Is that in statute or is that case law? I remember last time we did redistricting in 2010, it was, there wasn't, there were different court cases about percents. There was no 1%, it was a range. So, is this something new, David? Is this plus or minus 5 case law or a statute?
This is case law. This was actually a U.S. Supreme Court decision that basically, the issue had been raised as to whether or not the deviation met the one person, one vote requirement, and the U.S. Supreme Court ruled that you can have a deviation up to 10% because, again, they recognized that there were a number of reasons why you wouldn't be able to have 100%.
Right, right. So, a 10% spread, meaning a plus or minus 5, and when was this case, Supreme Court case?
2015.
Okay, yeah, so since, because I remember the last redistricting, the case law was more spread out over different numbers, so it looks like this has been since then, it provides us a little more guidance.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, note that this also says, under the Fair Maps Act, that these are ranked priorities. So, you start with the fact that the district should be contiguous, and then the second one, which is the one that the law has been most focused on for the current redistricting, is that communities of interest need to be respected. In other words, minimize the division of them. After that, then, it talks about, to the extent practicable, to respect the integrity of cities, to make sure that supervisor boundaries are easily identifiable and understandable. And then, the final one, which is where it does not conflict with the preceding criteria, the district line should be drawn to encourage geographical compactness. So, focusing on the community of interest, which is the major item that people are going to be interested in for this redistricting, the question is, what is a community of interest? The statute actually sets out a definition, which says, "It's a population that shares common social or economic interests that should be included within a single district for the purpose of effective and fair representation." But it says, "Community of interest can be almost anything. The only thing is, has to be identifiable by a specific geographic area." So, when you look at the guiding principles that the Board established back in February when we set up the process, whenever possible, we're going to maintain those communities of interest together in a single district and avoid splitting them, and we noticed that communities of interest could be defined by existing boundaries for cities, school districts, special districts, or even unincorporated communities. So, we've provided both for today's discussion, as well as on our dedicated website, just a listing of examples of community of interest, and this is not all inclusive, but as you can see, there are many things that could constitute an example of a community of interest, anything from housing patterns, cultural, religious, language characteristics, age, demographics, even all the way down to parks and dog parks. Unfortunately, there's no listing of cat parks, but that's presumptively could also be one as a practical matter. So, as I indicated, the official 2020 U.S. Census data that must be used, and specifically, it is as adjusted by California. So, this slide is already a little bit dated because it says, you know, we expected it April 1, then we expected the release sometime in September, as I indicated. The actual release of the legacy data will happen this Thursday, August 12th. So, we'll be able to start working on it at that point, subject to the other limitations and requirements. The data analysis and mapping is going to be done, of course, through our Department of Conservation and Development, our DCD staff and resources, and a little later, I'll ask Christine Song-Sang to walk everybody through what our dedicated website looks like and how we'll be able to use this to basically provide the public with a great opportunity to participate in our process. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Christine, and she's going to walk everybody through this note that we have, as it shows on there, our dedicated redistricting website, and that is cokoredistricting.org. So, that is up and running. There are some parts of it that will not be activated until we actually have the census data, specifically the ability to draw the district maps. However, the part where people can use the system for developing and drawing their communities of interest is available now, and we actually have started seeing some people participate in that. So, with that, I will turn it over to Christine.
Thank you so much.
Welcome, Christine.
Thank you, Supervisor Burgess. Thank you, members of the Board. I'm excited to share with you our website for redistricting. The primary purpose of the website, of course, is to provide members of the public with information about redistricting, as well as opportunities to, as well as opportunities for input. This is our website, and I'm just going to highlight some key features. The first feature is right up front and center is the most prominent information and what we're currently working on in the redistricting process, which, of course, right now is our public hearing that we're all listening to. As you scroll down, you will see information about all of our sub-pages. These are also on top, and if you scroll over the top, you can see them in both Spanish and Chinese, and we've tried to work really hard to ensure that there's a lot of language accessibility throughout the site. As you scroll down more, there's a tab. This tab exists on every page, and there's Contact Us, there's Facts in English. If you click, there's Facts in Spanish, in Chinese, and the Redistricting Resources. And these are links to other redistricting resources that might be helpful to the members of the public. As you scroll down further, there's our calendar, and after we approve the schedule, we'll populate this with all future redistricting hearings. I'm going to go up and show you a sub-page, and in this case, it's going to be the Public Opportunities page. And as that opens, each of these sub-pages have three tabs, one that is in English, Spanish, and Chinese again, so there's always an opportunity to read in whatever language folks are most comfortable with. This outlines all of the different types of public input. We have public input for the communities of interest, which, of course, is key for developing our district boundaries, and there are various ways in which you can provide public input. I'm going to go from the easiest, which is at the bottom here. You can mail your community of interest to the Clerk of the Board, you can email it to the Clerk of the Board, you can submit an online form, and I'm going to quickly open this up. And this is our community of interest form. If you just want to type some comments, it has every, all the information, again, in English, Spanish, and Chinese, and if you select a language, it will populate the rest of the form in that language, so you can provide your comments in whatever language you are most comfortable with. And really, what I'd like to highlight here is, we have an online mapping application that we can show you to submit your geographic areas. Of course, communities of interest must be a geography, so using a map is the easiest way to go a geography. We are working with a third-party application called District R. District R is run out of Tufts University and part of their math lab. This is just a one-page portal to provide public input. There's an introduction, and an introduction to redistricting, that's a worthwhile video to watch. The portal explains three different types of district of testimony. There's written testimony, a district plan, which, of course, is not available until our data is available, and then our communities of interest. And this will take you to how to draw a map, and it's actually just right below here. District R has provided some wonderful tutorials on how to draw a map, and then I'm going to open up the actual mapping application now by clicking this button. As this opens, this is a mapping application that is specific to Contra Costa County. What you see is Contra Costa County and all of the census blocks. I'm going to demonstrate a quick community of interest, and I'm going to highlight these tools. I'm scrolling over them, it's hard to see right here, but the hand tool allows you to move around, and of course, you can scroll in or zoom in or a particular area. I'm going to use Bethel Island as our example because it is very clearly a specific geography that might have some issues, some concerns due to the fact that it's an island. If you select the brush, you can make the brush really big, and it will select a huge area, or you can make the brush fairly small, is what I'm going to do, and just highlight the Bethel Island area. If I make a mistake and I do a bunch of extra, I can also use this eraser right up on top as Erase. I can just go back and erase. If I'm curious about how many people might live in a particular area, there's this magnifying glass, and I can just click on a block, and it will tell me how many people live there. Right now, there's no census data, so it has a placeholder for the population, but you can see how this would work once the data is available. So, if I have selected an area, there's a couple tools that I can use in these tabs. One is Boundaries, and District R is in the process of loading cities, census-designated places for unincorporated communities, and our existing supervisory boundaries, so those you'll be able to turn on and off so you can best draw your boundary. And then, there'll also be some population data. Additionally, if you have an area selected, it will show you what the population is and what the total population of the county is. In this case, it's still all placeholder data, so, but it will be updated once that data is available. I'm going to go back to the drawing, and here is our community of interest. I will call it Bethel Island, and this is an island community. I don't need to, I do need to spell it correctly. If there's any particular place that's important on the map, I could add that and call it an important place so that when map drop, when the map drawers are looking at this, they can see what's important in that community. And if everything looks good, I'm going to go ahead and save my map. Once it's saved, you can do one of two things. You can copy the map to a clipboard, or just like copy and paste, and send it and put it in a Word document to work on later, or send it to someone who might be interested in collaborating with you. But what we're really looking at here is proceed to submit map so that the county has a record of your community of interest. And so, proceed to submit map. And this takes you back to our redistricting portal, straight into the submission form, and you'll see right here, it has the URL that you could have copied and automatically places that. I'm going to write here again, this is Bethel Island. It is an important community. District R allows for the use of tags or hashtags. And here, I could write Bethel Island. And maybe something like Bethel. These tags are then searchable for future, so there's a couple different ways that you could use those tags, if a community organization could tag all of their maps and they could search then by the maps.
Christine, can I interrupt you for a moment?
Yes.
Can you scroll up a little bit where it says District R Submittel, right there, District R Community Map URL? I don't know that people are going to understand District R's who are using. Can they make that look like something other than a spelling error?
Well, District R is the name of the program, so we can't change that much.
Can they make it a logo or?
This text right here looks like a coding error that was not there before because usually it just says, "Please answer these questions." So, I will ask District R about why it says File District R Preview Course. That doesn't make much sense to me either.
No, 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 right above the link, the map URL, it says District R Community Map URL, and that District R looks like a spelling error. I know that it's for District R, the company that's doing this, but it looks like a spelling error, and it makes us look like we have a spelling error on our website.
Well, and before that, it was District R with a capital R, which
Yeah.
sort of helped out, so we need to be consistent throughout the website, at least if we can't...
I think that the official is District R with a small r because this is created by the District R company or group.
Just a feedback, I'm just seeing it, and I...
I see, I see exactly what you're saying.
Well, maybe there should be a tagline on the first page that when you see District R with a small r, it's not, it's a company name and has nothing to do with spelling. I mean, just put it out there.
Yeah, I have it in its own special font that it's, you know, seen everywhere, and so then they, that we know it's on purpose. I know that's a small thing, and I apologize for interrupting. It's just when I saw...
It's not a small thing, it's important.
Thank you.
Excellent.
It's an important thing.
Excellent, we will work to remedy that. So, let's see, I'm going to go back down to this, as you're filling out your submission form, we're asking people to fill out their personal information, but really, what we, the minimum that people have to fill out is their first name and an email address. The other information is helpful, of course, and that they understand that the name and location will be entered into this form, and it will be publicly posted as part of the public record. However, we will not publish any emails or phone numbers, and that if they would like us to be able to contact them with follow-up questions, they can also authorize that and hit Submit. I'm not going to hit Submit because this is not an official community of interest submission, but I will show you what happens once you do submit. Comes all the way down to the submissions that have already been submitted, which include Supervisor Glover, and there's a Kate from downtown Walnut Creek Core has submitted a community of interest. I can now click on this, and it will show me all the information about this Walnut Creek Core, including where it is. And once you're on a page about a particular interest, you can submit to provide a comment if you agree with it. You might just want to say, "I agree with this." You don't need to submit a whole map, you can just say that you agree, or you might have an idea of your own, that this is the downtown core, but you might want to make a change to it. And then, it opens up the submission, and you can go through, and once you amend it, it will give you a new submission that you can submit. I'll take you right back to our District R portal. That is a quick summary of the District R and our website. Does anyone have any questions that I might be able to answer? Does anyone have any questions that I might be able to answer?
I don't, oh, John, go ahead.
So I know I had raised this when I had talked. So you will be showing city census designated place and existing district boundaries on the map as soon as you get that data. Right, because with, there will be some initial, just the time, you said that there will be some initial non-block data, but data coming from the census that will be by city and CDP area. And that will allow you to put that data up as well. In other words, I know the maps, so the map, two things. The maps will show city boundaries and CDP boundaries. And when you get the data soon by city and CDP areas, you will upload that data or at least have it available by link on this site, correct?
Yes, so this map will have cities, CDP and existing boundaries to help people draw their communities of interest. And additionally, once we have the data from the Census Bureau by city, CDP and districts, we will be able to provide them on the website with a link for the redistricting data and we'll let everyone know.
Right, and, and that data will come soon, correct?
I would imagine by the end of the week or early next week at the latest.
Will you also, when you get the city and CDP data, will that also come with race and ethnicity and gender?
I believe for sure for the 18 and above population, but it might also be for the entire total population, so yes.
I, I think that, to the extent, I realize none of this is coming by census tract or by block area, which is what we will eventually need to do the maps. But to the extent that any more, any granular data by race and ethnicity is available by CDP and city, I would like to have that data also linked, either on this site or I know you may put this on the demographic page for the county and link to that. So in other words, we will be able to know the race and ethnicity of countywide as well as by city and CDP areas. And you'll be able to put that up here soon if it's available by race and ethnicity and gender.
As soon as we're able to put the information up, we'll absolutely be putting it up.
Which, which leads me to a question and maybe this is for you and/or for David. Can one of you explain sort of the law around consideration of race and ethnicity in terms of, clearly one cannot, you know, draw boundaries to discriminate on race or ethnicity basis, but you know, to the extent that it is used with regard to representation. Can you talk a bit, someone talk a bit about the law around that?
Well, very quickly, this is a part, comes both from the Federal Voting Rights Act of, of 1965 as well as the statutory requirements for state of California. But that is why those guiding principles in terms of descending order are there in terms of the goal is not to divide up communities of interest and communities of interest can specifically be designated by race or ethnicity or any other factor. So that is ultimately the goal is the, the census data that we get will allow us to see what that data is. But again, one of the reasons California has set up this very robust system is to ensure that as we develop the supervisory districts, we take that into consideration.
Thank you. You know, just, just as a comment, you know, I, most of our unincorporated areas, not all, are in CDP areas. So once.
Can you say what CDP means?
A CDP is a, is a census designated place. So for example, I think El Sabrante, unincorporated El Sabrante is a census designated place. Kensington is a CDP, Alamo is a CDP. I think Discovery Bay is. So there are some unincorporated communities that are and some smaller areas that are not. And so when, to the extent that data is available by cities and by CDP areas, it will at least give us a pretty good early indicator of, of where, of, of population trends and, and where there may need to be, you know, which will help in looking at lines. I just wanted to, to observe that. I will say, as, as someone who staffed and worked on redistricting issues back in 1980, when I was a staff person for a former county supervisor from District 1, we've come a long way in 40 years on data. Both the availability of, of data, the public's ability to draw maps. I mean, clearly there's even a big difference now from 10 years ago. There's an, it's just like in 1980, it was like prehistoric times. And, and this is actually so much more, you're right, resident friendly and easier and just, so I just wanted to just make that observation.
Thank you, Candace.
Yeah, but John raised an interesting question because a lot of my unincorporated areas are actually adjacent and almost part of a city. So for example, unincorporated Danville and unincorporated Walnut Creek, where one side of the street is Walnut Creek, the other side is unincorporated Walnut Creek. I'm assuming this, I don't, I don't know, and maybe Christine, as you look at maps, well, those, those probably won't have a different CDP or will they? Because I, I agree, you know, Alamo is, is separate. I'm assuming Black Hawk, it's its own, Diablo's its own. But when you've got unincorporated with the same name of a city, even unincorporated Lafayette, that in some, they have funny spheres as well. Do we have any idea what those will look like?
In some of those areas, there are CDPs such as Saranap is a CDP. Pockets of unincorporated Walnut Creek like Akalani's Ridge are CDPs, but not all areas within a sphere of influence is a CDP. The Census Bureau does have some requirements before they will approve any census designated place and it has to look like it is its own community, not just like the extension of a particular city. So this, we changed a bunch of CDPs or added new census designated places in the 2010 census, but this time we, there was not much change, if any at all.
Okay, well, and are you able to tell, I'm just curious about unincorporated Danville and the 94506 that goes east. Is that a separate CDP or is that?
I do not believe that is a separate CDP as I'm trying to remember the map in my head.
Okay, you know, and it's fine, we'll figure it all out. It's just, you know, John raised a great point. There will be some real easy ways to see, and then there are a few where I'm assuming it's a little murkier. But that's, that's why we've got the, the wonderful mapping tools that we all get to work with and the public does as well to try to identify where we're going with this.
I was going to say the same thing. It can be a community of interest even if it is not a CDP.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Great, so we'll let Christine continue.
I think that concludes the show and tell of the website and the mapping program and I can turn it back over to David.
Before you do that, though, make sure that supervisors do not have additional questions on the mapping program or the website.
Are there any more questions? Okay, go ahead Karen.
I think I understood this Christine, when you were talking about people submitting comments and then tagging them and then somebody else goes in, they can look at those comments. Can they, does that include looking at maps, other people's submission of maps?
Yes, in fact, what's on the screen right now is a submission, a public submission of the downtown Walnut Creek area. And so I can take a look at this and I could even, if I start to type and say, I like this. It becomes, and I can save it, it becomes a new submission. Or I could even go in and say, oh, I like this, but I think Walnut Creek actually is all of that area. And then I could reach submit, which I'm not going to do, but.
No, of course not. I guess where I'm going is if somebody sees a map and they like it and then they say, I like this and submit it, you're, you're looking at two of the same maps. And I remember from 2011, there were so many maps. I, I'm, my hope would have been that if somebody liked it, you know, that you didn't have to look at it a second time, but that's just how it is.
You can comment, just, just comment and say that you like a particular map and that could be the comment. That would be the best way for people to submit their comments.
And, and without submitting another exactly same map?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Christine, the other thing with the tags is that there's, you know, people will have their own interpretations of what they want. So going down to like the ag example at the bottom, with those tags, one person could do farming, where another person could do agriculture, where another could, could say sustainability or something like that. Are we going to have like ways to kind of have not so many tags that, you know, kind of are similar? I don't know if that makes sense.
We could do that if we wanted to. We can suggest tags if we would like, so it auto, like it auto suggests some tags. Or the community members can organize on their own and create those as well.
Okay.
One of the things to keep in mind supervisors is the goal is to have a very robust record that has to be kept for 10 years. So we're encouraging people obviously to put their comments in there and we want to be very careful that, that we're not discouraging that in any fashion.
Okay. Alrighty. Any more questions regarding mapping? Go ahead, John.
Are we going to have, so we should use our libraries as a resource for the public to be able to go in for those who, you know, may not have computer access or internet access, to have our libraries and, and be stations where people can go in. I think we should publicize this through our library and have, have folks have a chance to go in and use libraries for this. So I'd, I'd like to specifically request that we utilize the libraries and outreach, publicize it and have stations set up so the public is aware of it.
Supervisor, we're more than happy to do that. Keep in mind, any place that people would have access to the internet and a computer, they can automatically go to our dedicated website and do that. One of the things that we'll also be talking about in a little bit is, as part of our robust outreach, we are planning on having a couple of community workshops that'll actually be hosted by the District R staff to walk the public through how to use the system as well.
Yeah, I, I think for, although, you know, again, there is a digital divide and we're assuming everyone has access to the internet and that is not always true, especially with a computer. In fact, there's a lot of data that shows that, that now more and more people are utilizing the internet through their mobile phones. I will get into that in a second. So I, I think for purposes of, of equity, we really do need to utilize our libraries. And I'm sure you'll reach out to our county librarian Allison about this. But I, I think we need a specific effort to let people know who do not have a computer, computer access to come to our libraries to work on this. Do we have, do I hear a sort of a commitment on that?
No, absolutely. We're more than happy to do that because we want to make sure there's every opportunity. The other thing to keep in mind is, as we point out on the dedicated website, is people can also submit their ideas both by email or by snail mail or any number of ways. And if somebody simply sent us an email saying, here's what I think should be a community of interest, that add, will be, become part of the record as well.
David, let me ask this. So how user-friendly is this system on a mobile phone? I mean, there is, there is tremendous data that shows like most people overwhelmingly now access social media on their, so, on their, on their mobile phone, not on a computer, which is why the formats for all of that, for, for many programs, including social media, are really designed to be mobile phone friendly. How mobile phone friendly is this, is this program?
Well, the easy answer is to access the system and to email your communities of interest would be very easy. I'm not sure how easy it would be to, to basically draw a map on that though because of the limitations of, of your phone.
Right, that, yeah, see that's, and I realize that, that's what I, that's what I sort of assumed. So that is exactly why I think having libraries and, and we may in our outreach materials say and publicize that our libraries are, and maybe we can work with the Richmond Library, which has its own library system separate apart from the county, are, are stations where people can go to, to do this. Because I, again, we're assuming everybody here has access to an internet and a computer and that is really not universally true. And more people, especially a lot in lower income communities, are accessing it through their mobile phones with cell data too.
Correct. The other thing to point out is that District R is the company that we're using for our mapping, but it's not the same for other, either federal, state or other cities. Some may be using them, other counties, but this mapping tool is only for the county's supervisory mapping, just to make sure people understand. Candace, you have your hand raised.
I do have my hand raised. I think the other important thing to point out is that each of us have the opportunity to do what we think is going to be most helpful for the residents in our community. Each of us are doing at least one town hall, but I think just as we've done with, with COVID, when we find a community that may not be getting the outreach that's traditionally we're, we're pushing out, I think they're great opportunities for us to have our staff members working with those community members, opening up our offices to answer questions, to help people submit theirs as well. So I think there's, each of us really has this unique opportunity to figure out, you know, who isn't being heard in my community? How can I do greater outreach? How can I help them facilitate their submissions, so to speak, as to the maps? And so I think even how we tailor our town halls, you know, somebody might have a town hall where we're handing people maps and letting them draw, you know, on them and then submitting those and by hand. So I think really it's, we, we have this great opportunity to submit input as we think is going to be most beneficial for each of our communities.
Thank you Candace. Yeah, and it'll be important for people to remember that when the calendar of community meetings comes out, you are not restricted to just the meetings within your district. You can attend any of them. And the nice thing that, you know, looking at the draft calendar, people can do in person, they can do Zoom, they can go to Martinez, they can call in, there's going to be a lot of ways to participate. So, and then, you know, with those points being able to actually draw it out, that's available as well. Alrighty, the only other question I had when I was reviewing this, and this is to the supervisors that were involved in redistricting before. It looks like one of the lines that was drawn for my district included, kind of included the East Contra Costa Fire Protection District. It kind of kept all of that in that one district, it seemed. Were there any other types of situations where special districts made a difference in those lines? Because we're, don't, we don't have special district boundary lines that were, because there's just so many.
Well, I'll give you an example where not, and I wouldn't have even thought of it, is the Pleasant Hill Recreation and Park District. They do have parks and do go into Lafayette. So that is split, but there's never been a problem about that.
Yeah.
And I don't, and, and Special District or Central San, that's divided between two and four.
And Water District, yeah.
And Fire is divided, you know.
Yeah.
Right. It was just a question. Yeah, I just didn't know if there was some other considerations during, you know, that I wasn't aware of.
No.
Okay. Alrighty, so thank you, Christine. Mr. Toa, you're gonna bring it over to our county recorder.
Madam Chair, I just want to finish up with the, the public outreach portion that we're talking about. Again, we're planning to very robust public outreach. It's very helpful for the, the additional ideas and suggestions that the board already has provided to us. You will remember that as part of the census outreach in 2020, the board was very active and did a very robust approach to that. And we're using much of the same process. We also, we have already developed a list of, of emails from the census outreach process. And we did a blast out to all of that group saying, number one, here's how you can use our system. But also, number two, if you, if you want to sign up, you'll automatically then get updates as we go through the process. So our goal is to make sure that, that it is as robust as possible. One of the things we talked about and supervisors already mentioned is our proposed public hearing and workshop schedule that we're asking the board to adopt. Obviously, the one we had today. The next one that we're planning is October 5th. The reason for that one is by then we will have all of the census data available and we will have, what we're referring to is the over and under, which is basically, in theory, right now, the estimate is that each district, based upon the 2020 census, would have roughly 230,000 population. Under the, the 2011 one, each district had about 2,000, 211,000 population. So we'll have that data so that the board and the public will have an opportunity to start looking at the issue of how, and what adjustments are we going to make in order to fall within that 10% corridor. The next one would be on October 19th, and, and that would be the, the evening one that we set up, and that would be here. Obviously, depending upon where we are with COVID, there'll be some determination as to whether that can be in-person as well as our Zoom and our call-in functions. Between today and the, the October ones, we are also planning on having at least two community workshops, as I mentioned. Those would be hosted by the district, our staff, excuse me. One in September and one in October. So again, to provide some additional opportunities for the public to learn how to use our mapping and websites. Then in October, the period of between the 20th and the 29th, we are planning on a, a number of redistricting workshops in each supervisory district and hosted by the individual supervisors. But we will be there to provide all of the same information, as well as by that point, any potential maps that have been either submitted by the public or what we have drafted for proposal for the board to take a look at. Then in November, we would have two more public hearings, one on November 9th and one on November 23rd. And that would be with the goal of finishing up the redistricting. Obviously, it, the potential is there to have additional hearings if necessary. For example, right now, in order to complete the redistricting process, we have to do it by ordinance. That takes two readings. So, but there is legislation pending at the state level. Senator Glazier has a bill that would allow the counties to do the redistricting by, instead of doing it by ordinance, we'd be able to do it by resolution, which would eliminate the need for one additional reading of the ordinance. So we're remaining flexible because we have to. The goal is, of course, that we need to be done by December 15th, which is the statutory deadline to compete the redistricting. But in order to get to that point, you have to keep in mind that, that the clerk recorder, Deborah Cooper, also has work that needs to be done because shortly after that December 15th deadline starts the filing period in terms of anybody who is interested in running for office can start with the, the signature-in-loue process, for example. So they need to know where the district lines are by that time. So with that, unless you have specific questions about the proposed outreach process, I can turn this over to Deborah Cooper to talk about her needs and what's her plans are to get ready for the 2022 elections.
Alrighty. Well, I just need to say that I had to use some services in Ms. Cooper's offices this past week. And there was some exceptional people working the door, working the, working at each of the stations. And I sent her an email telling her what a great experience I had. But I thought I'd put it on the record, just because I can. Welcome.
Congratulations in order, Diane, not to.
Not yet, just an application. Thank you.
Okay, just wondering not to digress.
Okay, thank you. And David, you're gonna move the slides for me, right?
Yes.
So this, this is the slide. So at this point in the redistricting process, by the way, hello, hi, members of the board, thanks for having me here. But at this point in the redistricting process, the focus is on the supervisory districts. It's on transparency, it's on public outreach and public participation. The Elections Division has a little bit different focus because our process really begins in earnest once the district lines are drawn and finalized, which is what David's talking about, December 15th. So for the federal, state, and county offices, that's December 15th. And like you said, we have a short turnaround time. SIGZ in lieu filing actually starts on December 16th. So we will have the lines and be able to tell where candidates' districts are, but we will not have the precincts set yet. But there'll be enough information available to allow candidates to pull their papers. Technically, I think we're in violation of an elections code, but we're going to make sure that we have enough time so that they can do their SIGZ in lieu process. So we're going to get them their papers as soon as we can. And then that, those, that will be done for the June 22 election. So our focus is going to be re-presincting just for that election. It's going to be a, a one-time thing, and then we'll be having to redraw them again for November. Because cities, special districts, and school districts all have their deadlines come up on April 17th, May 12th, and March 1st. So we have, we maintain the boundaries of 100 different districts within the county. And we think there'll be about 30 of them redistricting for November 2022. I think there's four or five that have never redistricted before. They'll be going from at-large to district elections. So it will be a new experience for them. Those that already have district elections, they will already be familiar with the process. So re-presincting involves modifying the voter precincts to conform to the new district boundaries. And it must be done before candidates file to run for office. And each district is responsible for creating their own district lines. And when multiple districts overlap, like if school districts, special districts, council districts, it gets very complicated. So in a perfect world, if they, there would be more alignment if the districts could work together, especially those that are involved in the same communities of interest. So anyway, as we prepare for the elections, was I used to say, sorry, that, our GIS staff are usually assigned other election activities once our maps are finalized. So we'll probably be having to staff up with some additional temporaries to cover those duties because they're gonna, they can't do two things at one time. So we're really looking forward to, to getting that all done. So some of the other things that we're concerned about is the multiple processes that we do to verify the integrity. David, could you go back one slide to 20? Thank you. So we're, we're at the bottom of that. The Election Division goes through multiple processes to verify the integrity and accuracy of the lines that are submitted by the districts. So we have to make sure they conform with the tax rate areas, that someone isn't paying into a tax for a particular service and not in that district. And then we compare them against our current lines and have to check for parcel splitting. You know, our goal is not to create too many sub-precincts or brand-new, you know, areas that have unique voting groups, but sometimes that just happens. And then we'll also align with natural and physical features, which is no one should have to drive through one precinct to get to theirs from where they live. So we try not to have a, a major, you know, hill or a mountain or a creek or something, so it's easy for them to vote. And then projection standardization is that the maps that come out are able to be used by our maps. And the District R software does produce maps in a, in a format that we're able to use. So that, that's something else that we look for. Okay, next slide. So then, once all the districts are finalized, then we move the data over to our voter registration database because the maps are really just a visual projection of what's in our database. And we use that to verify that, you know, all 706,000, I think we have now voters, are in the right precinct. And then we overlay, overlay the lines for the districts, see how they interact. We're hoping someone will be able to snap to the census lines and things like that. And then we are concerned because typically we would have gotten our first information from this, about the supervisory districts back in April or May. And now we're not going to even see the initial information until September, and we're not going to have the lines until December. So it's going to be a very short turnaround time, but we have some really good GIS staff that will, they're, they're, they're prepping up as we work. They're doing as much prep work to break our precincts into sub-precincts and line up with the census tracts so that we'll be in the best place we can be when that information comes. And then redistricting is a two-way process. We work with the districts back and forth to talk about some of the things you guys, you were talking about, about overlapping lines and, and lines that split through supervisory districts and things like that. And we hope we don't get them all at the last second. We will be promoting with our districts to provide us their information as soon as possible. Don't wait till the deadline if, if you can, because that gives us a jump on getting those things done. So that is all I have. If you have any questions.
I'm muting myself. It looks like Candace just unmuted herself to ask a question.
No, I was just, it's not even a question, it's just a comment, Debbie. It sounds like you've got a really good approach to be able to, you're gonna be on such a short timeline. And I'm, I'm hopeful that even though we have a final hearing December 15th, that as we draw closer, we'll have a pretty good idea, you know, approximately of where those boundaries will be because it is so critical. And for those who are running for office or contemplating running for office, knowing, you know, what their district would be and, and how they might be impacted. So I want to thank, I'm just really thanking you for being part of this and coming up with sort of these ideas, ways to make sure that we're ready to, to go as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Candace. I don't see John or Federal or Karen. I, I, I agree with Candace. You know, we have what's called a compressed timeline. And this is an important process that we're going through. And it's been my intention, and I'm sure it's all of us, that we want to not appear like we're just trying to jam it through and get it done. We really want public engagement. We are trying to make it very clear what we're doing, how we're doing it, and encourage people to get involved. And, you know, I, I think Debbie just really helped very clearly explain why these numbers are used and why we need them at certain times. And, you know, I'm encouraged because I know some of the cities are already starting there. So Debbie, you'll probably hopefully get some early ones from the cities. But you know that the county is just waiting for this data to get here. And we will try to get this to you as quickly as possible, but we will not take any shortcuts as far as engaging people. And so we are just trying to do this balanced process during a very compressed timeline. So thank you for working with us. Alrighty, so we'll bring it back to Mr. Toa. And then if my colleagues have any questions or comments, then we'll go to public comments after that. So, Mr. Toa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing further to add to the conversation at this point, other than to hear what comments or questions supervisors have, and as well as the public comment.
Okay. So I'm looking at my colleagues. It's so nice because I can actually see when we're in person, I'll have to be kind of looking. We'll have our new system where we'll be learning how to, you know, raise our hands. But I don't see any public, any interest in speaking up. So let's bring it to public comments. And we're gonna start with phones, then we'll go to Zoom. And Jamie, she's got this down. So Pat, I'm gonna turn it over to her.
If there are any callers on the line who would like to speak on the 2021 redistricting process, please press pound two. We have no callers on the line. If you want to give your public comment over Zoom, please raise your hand in the app. Once it is your turn to speak, the moderator will unmute and promote you. You will get a prompt requesting you to click "Join as Panelist." Before you provide your comment, please ensure that your sound and/or video is on. We do have a Zoom participant.
Great. So I am going to look at our list. We have, now I'm not seeing any hands raised. Oh, we do. Here we go. Mr. Bennett is joining us. He's gonna have to unmute. If he's gonna share his video, he will do that. Welcome, Mr. Bennett.
Good afternoon, I mean, good morning. This is Pete Bennett. I am a homeless resident of your county, have been there for about 10 years. I actually took out papers to run for public office in 2014. And in 2004, after being on TV around the world, I attempted to run for congressman. I was being told by people that were asking me about jobs and outsourcing that we wanted you to run for office. Congressman Pombo suggested it. Instead, I end up homeless. I have one blog called The Homeless Candidate, or homeless, yeah, something like homelesscandidate.blogspot.com. And I documented what happened to me at the city of Walnut Creek, where police officers chased me out of City Hall, so I couldn't run for office. I was attempting to file my papers. You know, obviously, you guys know I have a lot of disdain for the county. I like the presentation, and you know, I'm on welfare, and I'd like a job working for the, maybe for the Department of Elections because I actually know most of the software that they presented. And if I can write mortgage-backed securities without a math degree, I'm perfectly capable of doing something like that. Do you want to get me off welfare? Maybe that's a possibility. I worked for the county in 2000. I was retaliated against. I saved you $30,000 for the application I wrote. I was fired. No reason, no cause. That's because I've discovered things about how my witnesses have been killed. And unfortunately.
That is just a 10-second warning.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. That's okay. Thank you.
So my blog is called DeadWitness.com and CNNScandal.com. And I got one coming out about the county because I'm being tired of on the other side of the racism story around here. My friend was beat to death right just two blocks from me.
All right, and I am sorry, but that is two minutes?
Yep. Alrighty. And I don't see any other hands raised. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Alrighty. So we'll take it back to my colleagues. Any questions or comments?
Is there anyone on the phone that I see?
Is there anyone on the phone that I see?
So any questions or comments from?
There's someone, someone named Courtney has raised their hand on Zoom.
Oh, someone just, they just did that, okay. So I'm going to remind people, if you'd like to make a comment, this is the last call. Courtney, welcome, we're going to move you over. And you're going to unmute yourself? I'm not seeing her. Is she not? Is she brought over or not?
She should be. And just a reminder to Courtney, if you're on, to accept the prompt to join the panelists.
I don't see her as a panelist.
It appears she may have accidentally dropped off.
Okay. Alrighty. So I'm going to do one more check on phones and one more check on Zoom just so that we're making sure we're using technology with its limitations and its challenges. So Jamie, can you do one more check?
Sure, of course. If there are any callers on the line who would like to speak on the 2021 redistricting process, please press pound two.
If there is anyone who wants to comment on the process of redistribution of districts for 2021, please press the number two.
There are no callers.
Okay. And I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom. So I'm going to give you a, a moment to raise your hand. And nobody is raising their hand. Okay, Sean Gilbert, go ahead. We're going to bring Sean over as a panelist. And then as soon as she is moved over, we're going to ask her to unmute and show her video if she wants. Welcome.
Good morning. This is Sean Gilbert. I'm observing today for the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley. I want to thank Mr. Twah and Debbie. And I'm not sure of, of Ms. Sol Sang's name, but thank you for the presentation. I appreciated learning about District R, and I, I understand the confusion that was raised by one of the board members. I think it was you, Diane. But I think once I scanned through some of the information, it, it became a little bit clearer. And going to Supervisor Joya's question about community members who may not have access to internet and they use their phones. I did go on my phone and see if I could navigate through the District R program, and it seemed to be pretty easy. And I'm not a tech-minded individual by any means. And it was, the English was followed by Spanish and the Chinese languages. So that looked like it was working pretty well. I appreciate Mr. Twah's sharing about some of the upcoming trainings for using the District R program to help the public work with this tool for doing redistricting. And I thank you for trying to get this information out to as many members of our community as possible because I, I agree that this is an important factor for our community being engaged in, especially with what we see. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Alrighty, so there's no more hands raised. We went through two cycles of just making sure people get on. So we are going to now move it back to any more questions or comments or direction to the board, from the Board of Supervisors.
Madam Chair, I, I would ask you to close the public hearing at this point.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. I will close the hearing. So my colleagues seem to have all their questions answered. As Mr. Twah said, this is, you know, we really do want to do the most robust engagement possible, mindful of the unusual times, whether it's the census data coming in or with the restrictions from COVID. Looking at the possible dates, there will be opportunities to do this in person, and there will be opportunities to do this on a weekend during the day or in the evening. So we encourage anybody that is interested in participating to, you know, pay attention. And Candace, I really liked your ideas of, you know, even getting our staff to reach out to those different communities to help them access it. So with that, is there any type of voting that you need from us or any specific direction that you need from us?
Madam Chair, we had a number of recommendations. We would ask the board to adopt those. Was the accept the report from Deborah Cooper, from the mapping staff and myself, to direct us to basically provide training to staff and the public on the District R modules and public submission portals, as well as establishing the public supervisory workshops and to continue outreach to the public on the redistricting process. To also essentially, once we have the official US Census data, and again, specifically the California Census data, to provide an analysis of the 2020 redistricting census population data to the, to the board, as well as to prepare for additional public hearings, board workshops, additional public outreach and the next steps.
And Chair, I'd move that, the county administrators' recommendations.
Or my county administrator.
It is coming from the county administrator.
Okay, thank you. Both of them.
Second all of that.
Thank you, Candace. So I have a motion and a second. So I will ask Jamie to do a roll call.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three?
Yeah, thank you, and that was unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Twah, Ms. Sol Sang and Ms. Cooper for your presentations and your support.